We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the April meeting of the Administration and Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole, Township of Bakersburg Cardinal. And we had a little ceremony at the beginning welcoming Team Industrial back. They've been absent from our township Team Solutions. They've been absent from our township for about two years since their fire, but we're glad to have them back in the township. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda as amended, and the clerk did send, Deputy Clerk did send around today a revised agenda adding item number five C to the agenda. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Can I have him over, please? Councilor Barrett, and seconded by Councilor Morrell. Those in favor of the motion, please signify. Motion's carried. And the next item on the agenda is disclosure pecuniary interest, Vinnie, and the general nature thereof. Deputy Mayor Taylor.
I have an indirect pecuniary interest on six A, as I am a member of the Executive of the Legion branch, which is a very close proximity to the Legion Hall.
Okay, and that disclosure's been provided to the Deputy Clerk. And Councilors now.
Seven H, there's certain parts of the rights and provisions that I will be excluding myself from, and Deputy Clerk also has that information.
So two disclosures here this evening. Councilor Morrell, there will be one item on the seven H that I have not written to the Deputy Clerk before, getting with the community grants as well, but I'll absolve of the discussion. I'll be taking part in that. Three disclosures.
Actually, I need to add one, I missed the food bank. So I have to amend my to include indirect as my relatives on the board. Can I volunteer that?
That's food bank. Goodness. Haven't seen so many disclosures yet.
The new changes, they haven't got it.
All right, so I'm moving now then to the next item on the agenda, which is business arising from the previous meeting. The minutes of the previous meeting were circulated with the package. Does anyone have any business arising to bring forward from that meeting? Hearing Councilor.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Just wondering if there was an update on presentation to the CDC with regards to item eight on this agenda? So we received an update at our council meeting in March. I'm just wondering if with regards to the zoning bylaw for hobby farms, if there's been a plan for delegation or for the research from the Community Development Coordinator to be presented at the May meeting of this.
Okay, so I'm just going to turn now over to staff. We did have a CDC meeting in April, but we'd had nothing, there was no update there, I don't think. Was there? I can't remember where it was.
There was.
There was?
Yeah, the CDC Community Development Coordinator did provide a report to the committee on the concerns that had been expressed, as well as the research that she had done in the outcome. CDC reviewed it in some detail, and I've just seen the minutes today, actually, and currently they feel that they've done their research and done their due diligence, and they're happy with the bylaws as they stand.
Thank you.
Any other business arising here? Okay, hearing done. I'm going to go on then to item five on the agenda, and item five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. We have three here tonight. And the first one is the EORN presentation on internet costs, and I think Lisa Severson and Paula Preston are here. And Lisa, we've seen before. Welcome, Lisa. Nice to have you back again.
Oh, that's okay. It's not in the way at all. So thank you very much for allowing us to come this evening. We were contacted by staff, as well as a member of your committee, to talk to you about the municipal fiber options that are available to the municipality. And I'm just going to, I think there was a copy of the presentation included in your packages. So I am just going to, I'm going to use this. There we go. So I won't belabor this. I'll talk a little bit about the first phase of the EORN broadband project. We started that project in 2010. We, it was a public-private partnership, and it was funded by the province, the federal government, as well as the collective of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Those are the 13 upper-tier municipalities in Eastern Ontario, with the exception of the city of Ottawa. We built a backhaul transport network, as well as access, or last mile, as it's referred to, that brought internet to residents and businesses up to 10 megabits. We have approximately 150 new subscribers, so that's homes and businesses, with the up to 10 or more services. There were 160 points of presence, so the Bell building here in Spencerville, it was upgraded with new electronics, and fiber was brought to that building to enable it to provide the access to that highway trans, I call the backhaul, it's like the 401. So it carries all the traffic, and the off-ramps are those points of presence, and then it gets pushed to the residents from those access points. We started in 2010, and we completed our build in March of 2015. At that time, we have a small budget, that we have 2.5 staff, Paula being one, and we have a, she's our half-staff person. And we have our CEO who works out of our Peterborough office, and we're working on some other projects that we're hoping will be approved by the federal provincial government shortly. We have contracts with the private sector until 2024. They have certain service level agreements and performance measures that they are required to meet through our project. So phase two, that's the phase we're in right now. And what we're here to talk to you tonight about is the municipal fiber project. So in 2013, 2014, we started discussing with, we issued a request for disposal to see what the appetite was in the area in regards to providing additional coverage to municipal buildings. We'll go into a little bit more detail in that, in the presentation. We're also working, there is a municipal county IT group. They meet on a quarterly basis. They discuss things such as cybersecurity and other topics that are related to municipal governments. We've created some toolkits and white papers that are available on our website. We have created a municipal e-toolkit, as well as a business e-toolkit. There's also a white paper on public Wi-Fi and how it can be utilized by municipalities. It talks about the pros and the cons of having public Wi-Fi spaces in your municipality, and the importance for possible economic development and tourism. We also are, we also advocate to the CRTC and to the federal provincial governments on the need to continue funding broadband and connectivity in all of Ontario, but especially here in Eastern Ontario. And our big project that we're, we have the big push on now is for, is trying to fix the gaps in cell coverage in Eastern Ontario. And it's not just the gaps, but it's also the capacity issues that we're facing. And we're also taking to our boards, probably within the next two or three months, work on what it would take to get Eastern Ontario to the CRTC mandated 50 by 10, that they've said that 9% of all Canadians should be at that level of service for connectivity by 2021. So we don't want, especially the rural residents of Eastern Ontario, to be the last 10% to achieve those types of speeds. So on to the municipal fiber. The RFP story went out in July of 2015, and it focuses on bringing fiber to a municipal, to any of your municipal buildings. What we were able to negotiate, we have two master business internet agreements with both Nexacom and Bell. Nexacom is based, excuse me, mostly in the Peterborough area, and Bell covers the rest of the region. Prior to this, these agreements being set, a 100 by 100 symmetrical service, fiber service into a building could cost anywhere from $800 to $1,500 a month for their monthly bill. We were able to negotiate that if you are willing to enter into a contract with Bell for a 10-year period, that would drop to $475 a month. Paula's going to talk to you a little bit about what you can do with that type of a connection, and some of the services that you'd be able to offer, because she'll get into a little bit more of the technical aspects. That agreement is in place until 2025, and municipalities are able to take advantage of that at any time. To date with these, we have about 60 sites within the municipalities in Eastern Ontario who have participated, and we have recognized globally on that about $155,000 in savings. One good example of that is Halliburton County. They actually, the capital cost for you, if there was a capital cost to bring that fiber into this building, it would be the responsibility of the municipality to pay that capital cost. County of Halliburton decided to put a chunk of money away, I think it was about $250,000, that they were willing to connect their local municipal administration buildings. And they actually came in under budget, and as a result of them connecting, they have also helped 22 local businesses connect to fiber, because it's running by those businesses and they're able to connect. So there has been great spinoffs. They've been able to go to a voice-over IP, which call a telephone system, at the county level, as well as with those local municipalities, so it's saving costs for their phone services as well. So it's been a project that many of the municipalities who have participated have seen some great savings. So as we said, it's volume purchasing. The contract is between the municipality and Bell. It would not be, EORN was just a facilitator in doing large procurement costing. There's no penalty if you already have an existing contract with Bell to switch out the type of service that you're currently using. And again, there's a possibility for, to take advantage of this within the next eight years. And we do meet with Bell on an annual basis to see if the rates are either lowered, or they'll be able to offer higher speeds and capacity to us as time progresses and technology evolves. I'm going to let Paula talk a little bit more about this. She is our technical manager, and she has a much better handle on that.
Hi, Shannon. Probably going to be more likely to open it up for questions at this point in time, if anybody has any questions. But maybe I'll start on the fiber discussion and go through some details, and if you do have any questions, or if I'm saying anything that's not clear, please ask me by all means, because I'm trying to make sure that you understand what we're trying to do with this project. I mean, I think that the key thing is that the difference between, I believe the buildings here currently have a DSL-based service, which, which one did you use, the arrow?
Yeah.
Just the enter key? Enter. Most of the buildings here have a DSL-based service, I understand, which provides your internet access via copper using, and the speeds that you get here are quite limited in terms of, it's a distance from your office to the switch, which is located in the building just around the corner here. But it's sort of, I understand you're limited to something like 10 by 1, 5 by 1 in these buildings, upload being a major issue from a speed perspective. To give you an example, most urban households these days are running at 50 by 10, 100 by 10. And you're trying to run an office or a business on something 10 by 1 or under, or it's, with multiple users using the same equipment, you're using, when you're trying to use the internet mode computers, it's a real challenge in terms of efficiency from an operational point of view. Going backwards, can we go backwards?
Just the down button. The down and up button.
Yeah, up button, down button. There we go. Down, right buttons. A fiber service, on the other hand, is as dedicated fiber optics into the building from the main switching point. Speeds are effectively unlimited. The business package that you're being offered through Bell is as 100 by 100, so it's 100 megabits per second download and 100 megabits per second upload. It's a type of service that can be shared by multiple users, multiple, even multiple sites to some extent. So for instance, with the Bell proposal, you could run the fiber into this site here, and if you wanted to provide service through to the arena, or to any of the, I confess, I don't know the area well, to any of the arena, or any of the buildings associated with the, with that community area there, or the community center, you could run dark fiber laid by a contractor from this building. You wouldn't have to pay for any connection charges. You could share those costs over three, that 475 a month, over three or four buildings in the immediate area. Very plausible, very easy to do. I don't know what your total costs are from an operating perspective for running services into those three buildings, but you could look at what those total costs are and see if overall it's a savings. That's what we've seen in many other buildings, in many other areas, even something as simple as County of Hastings, as a medical health center. They, that's a municipal building with municipal offices in it, and then they also have community health in the building and a private medical office, as well as the owner of that building, County of Hastings has brought service into that building and is sharing it at cost to the other tenants in the building. So if you've got situations like that, that's something to look at. We're looking at the same sort of thing in another community as well, where we're bringing fiber in and sharing the costs. So it's something that you could consider doing, but you need to look at what your total overall budget, because I know 475 is, on a monthly basis, is a lot of money. Let me go to the next slide. Again, some more examples. I've talked, Lisa and I have talked about most of these things here. Certainly fiber, the upload capabilities that you would get, that improved speed, would allow you to do things like access the cloud more efficiently, manage backups more efficiently. I don't know what the county is doing in terms of shared services that they would want or encourage you to take part in. If they're running backups, or if they're running GIS applications or anything like that, you can use the internet more efficiently to take advantage of that. Whether it's being uploading the video from this meeting, that's much more simpler to do if you've got 100 by 100 symmetric versus trying to upload it at one. Just think the hours that you'd be saving from a municipal staff perspective, trying to make that happen. In addition, I think you may already be running Wi-Fi in the arena, I don't know, but it's something you could improve the speed and capacity on that for your community. I don't know if you've got a public library here, but again, although they're serviced generally by a public library grant that provides funding, these are all options that you could do to improve service in the community through various types of solutions. I think I've gone through all of those. I mean, let's go to, take a look at, you know, I did this, pulled up this little map off of Google, to give you some of the ideas of what would be involved. Because we think fiber runs down the main street, show of main street, main center avenue, or whatever center street. The Bell building is the one on the top that circled. The distance there is not very far. We don't actually know the capital costs of bringing it into this site, but it's within a kilometer, it's probably going to be, I'm not 100% sure, we need to work that, it may not be any costs to you, but until we get an actual quote from Bell to make that happen, we won't know for sure. That's what would be one of the next steps, is if you guys are interested as a community, as a municipality going forward, we would ask, we would participate, work with you to get a firm quote from Bell on what the cost would be, to make that happen.
We understand there's no capital if we take the 10-year contract.
If the, depends upon if you're close enough to what the cost for them running fiber is. There could be a cost. If you take a 10-year contract, for instance, in Halliburton, there was tens of thousands of dollars of cost, but it was because they had to bring new fiber in. Here, the fiber is right in the community. I don't think there's going to be much of a cost, but we won't know for sure until we do a physical quote.
How do adjoining businesses or residences benefit from that?
Unfortunately, the, there's, with the exception of the municipality doing something like public Wi-Fi, local residents will not benefit from it unless they themselves want to bring in a fiber connection into their house. This is a different type of technology than the fiber-to-the-home type of technology that is rolling out in some communities across Eastern Ontario. Fiber-to-the-home uses a different type of electronics equipment in the office, in the Bell office, or whoever provides it. And there are different type, and it's still copper, or it's still fiber, but it's a different, different than a dedicated service. It's effectively a shared service. So this does not provide that type of service, but whether something like the Joe's computer could actually bring in fiber straight into their office and improve their Wi-Fi service, these are all options that have been available in the community since the POPS were brought into place last year. Your industrial park, which these gentlemen were talking about earlier, fiber could be brought into there as well to serve those needs as well. Is that industrial park served for the project?
Not for the project, but it's served, on the fiber note, the fiber-to-the-home, Bell has been making huge investments across Eastern Ontario, places like Hoxbury, Port Hope, they're all receiving fiber-to-the-home now, or they're being built out. And there could be a possibility in a few years that the more fiber that is brought into a building like this, or to the arena, it may trigger them to say, okay, there is a business case for us to come and do a fiber-to-the-home.
Or there's demand in the area too? I mean, demand by consumers asking for the services makes a big difference. I don't know if you've got any new residential property plans going on in terms of new greenfield builds, but even communities like Workworth in Northumberland, the main downtown's not gotten a fiber.
Okay, so I don't want to go down that road, I just, okay. My main interest is how, is this building and our other municipal buildings. I just want to go back and touch base with my staff just for a minute. You had the basic premise that we were working on 10 to 1. How accurate is that?
It's very accurate.
That's very accurate.
Or worse.
Depends on the day.
Okay, so then at 100 to 100, it'd be quite a bit different. Now, the next question is, the 475 or 400, it was 475 was the number that I heard in the original presentation. How does that compare with our present cost?
We're paying about 115.
For each building?
Yeah, for the town hall, yeah. And it's a little less actually, at the arena and the fire hall.
Okay, but the arena is an add-on to that?
Yeah, about 60, I think.
Okay, so we're at, what?
110.
110. What do you think the arena is?
60.
59. I'm in this paper from last month.
Okay, I, okay, so let me just go ahead then, because unless you have the numbers, what's the library?
Well, the township hall is 15-1, okay, and it's 110 a month. The arena's 5-1, and it's $59. It is a cap of 50 gigabytes. The fire and the public works in Spencerville are 64 and 49 respectively, but the public works department only has two down.
And it's not in Spencerville? Those are Kirk, and it's in Pittston.
It's in Pittston?
Yes. It's under the Spencerville.
What's the library?
I don't.
We didn't include that.
The library's not included.
They take care of their own internet, so we don't have to.
I think they look after their own.
Yeah, but I mean, the point is that they could, they could be a contributor to the 425.
475.
475. Do we know what the fire hall is?
Yeah, I think Mr. Bradley just said it was 64, sorry.
The Spencerville Fire Hall is 64. Cardinal Fire Hall is...
Okay, now we have to compare it all, just what would, what would go in this note?
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead.
May, Your Honor, one comment is, is that the...
I'm not elevated to that status.
Sorry, I don't know what yours does. I don't know if I want to call Mr. Sayer. I don't know, sir. One comment is, is that the fire hall is probably too far away to be fed without a separate connection via fiber. I don't think you can drive it from here, but you could put a, what's called a point-to-point wireless shot from, it's probably in sight on a, on the, on a top of this building, you could probably connect to it with a point-to-point wireless shot. Somebody like Joe's computer, or there are many other service providers in the area who'd be more than willing to give you a quote to provide service in that area. It's not that expensive.
Okay, so if they did it that way, would it still be 100 and 100?
You'd be sharing, regardless of how, it's 100 and 100 coming into this building, you're still going to be sharing it across all the number of users. So you would probably allocate to them a, you'd probably allocate them a lower speed based on what you expect their need would be, even if it was something like 20 by 20 that you would allocate to them through the router. But that would still be significantly improved over what they've got right now, because it's a symmetrical service. It's not a, it's not a asymmetrical service, which is the 15 by 1. And the other comment is, is that I think the speeds that Mr. Bradley was reading off are the service package offering from Bell. It's the up to that 15 by 1, so your actual speeds are not 15 by 1. They're significantly lower.
Okay, so I don't want to monopolize the conversation here. Let other people in. Councilor Morrell.
I just have a couple of inquiries. Number one, has there been any teaming up or partnership, let's say with, I'm thinking of the, find a preference to the school and so forth, that here with the school board and then our library direct access on the way to the school? Has there been any like shared services where people are going together that you're aware of in this, in Eastern Ontario Regional Network?
There, these school boards are under separate contracts through various carriers. They were negotiated separately and not part of anything associated with Eastern Ontario Regional Network, so we don't know what's happening in that context. And generally speaking, I believe the libraries have generally, generally, unless they're under the control of the municipality, have generally negotiated their own contracts, often because they are, they get separate grants from various people. We do have library people on some of our services in other areas though.
If I may just, one more, Paula. And Lisa's part of the presentation on phase two, where she started, the second viewpoint there is that work with municipal IT group, dash cybersecurity, et cetera. Now, we just upgraded our cybersecurity and then with a group called OnServe and so forth, and we're paying them now. How, is there any, any kind of like spinoff that might be a cheaper option for us as opposed to our present, present service?
So OnServe, I believe is your IT support organization that you contract with. They've probably provided direct recommendations to your staff in terms of what makes sense for you. What we've been doing is, is working with the county-based IT departments who have developed some various policies and insurance programs associated with cybersecurity. I think that's probably a reasonable thing, is to go up to the county, is for staff to contact the county IT departments and ask what they're leveraging out of that program.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just.
Anybody else want in here before I kind of thank the speakers? Okay, how are we going to deal with this? I'm not sure. Just wanted to get the broad general's understanding of how you work. The next step would be for us to determine whether or not we had budget, and then if we had an appetite for cost, then determine what the relationship with Bell would be.
Correct.
Okay.
And so if you decided to go forward that, the recommendations would work with us to make that. And so if you decided to go forward that, the recommendations to work with us to make that happen because we have the contracts. If you go to your local Bell, we work with a different part of Bell than your local Bell salespeople, so.
Yeah, Jim Pine made that quite clear. You get the Bell contact through you rather than any other method.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank you for coming and thank you for the presentation. It's of interest to me. I don't know what the appetite is all around, but it'll be up for discussion in the next few weeks.
If there's any questions, you can contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll put that down for a later discussion. And so now I'm moving on to Five B, which is the next delegation of presentations. And before I move on to Five B and Five C, I'm just going to mention that generally, presentations by delegations are limited to ten minutes. But we did invite those folks to come. And because they're at our invitation, I let the discussion go on a little bit longer than I should have. But so now I'm moving on to Five B, which is Connect Youth. And I guess, Norrie, are you going to introduce the speakers?
Holly will introduce, thank you.
Holly will introduce the speakers. And it's Holly Howard, and you're the co-chair of Connect Youth.
I am co-chair, yes.
You and Norrie.
That's right.
Co-chairs, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Has he just said, Norrie and I are co-chairs of Connect Youth and the board directors. I've been with them since two thousand and one when they were formed. So I guess you could say I'm a legacy member of the board. I've been before you guys a few times now, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I'm just going to give you a little basis on what Connect Youth is. And our mission is to assist, support and refer young people in need and to advocate for youth in partnership with our communities. Our biggest thing is our collaboration with all the services in the area. We have very strong partnerships with Children's Mental Health, Child and Children Services, with the Food Bank. Home Depot has come on board in the last couple of years. We now have a very solid partnership with them and they do some fundraising for us. The health unit. I can go on, but every social service that youth can access, we are the ones that try to help them. And I often use the term that we are the hammock that holds on to these kids that fall between the gaps. So even with the change of age, with the Child and Family Services Act, there's still a big difference, no big difference for us because the kids have to be a volunteer into the program, the CAS. So we're still holding on to these kids that don't voluntarily go into the programming. We're still holding on and making the referrals to housing, to whatever. Getting the identification done, or something that's simple, to teaching them. Yeah, you're aware the legislation changed January first of this year. So the CAS will now, up until eighteen, will take calls for youth in need. And but the seventeen and eighteen-year-olds, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds turning eighteen have to be a voluntary agreement in order to enter into any kind of care. So they have to say yes. And so we're still seeing the same amount. We just have one more place that we can take them and get some help, basically. Because they used to just say, oh, they're almost sixteen, sorry, you'll have to try something else. So that's where our hammock portion sort of comes into play. We get our funding from United Way. We are the largest funded organization through the United Way. And we've received sustainable funding for one staff for as long as I can remember. So that's good. And our other funding, we always have various draws in the fire, so to speak. I just finished a Home Depot grant last night. Carrie and I did have done a couple of other ones in the recent future, in the recent past for what's called a housing support worker, which again is through the Ministry of Child and Youth. Goes hand-in-hand with the CAS new legislation. So we can continue our work with the kids, but with another person. So we've got lots of options. What we ask the communities to do is help us just maintain our core program, which is giving the kids hot lunches and just giving the kids access to clothing, access to things they might need to have a successful day in school, to have a successful day at home, coats, boots, basic, basic things.
Reduce crime.
Yeah.
Reduce suicide.
Yeah, for help. Connect Youth was formed as a result of male committing suicide from Augusta. Sorry, from Augusta. And the kids said, there's nothing, there's nothing for us to do. There's nothing for us to do to help our friends that are suffering. And that's why Connect Youth was formed originally.
So I think your purpose of your presentation here tonight, though, is to deal with our grant program.
Yeah, but it's just nice that you have a little back, the backend of why we exist. So Carrie Ornstein is our current program manager and a program coordinator. And she's going to give you some stats. And she has highlighted what the numbers are from the Edersburg Cardinal area.
So this marks about my year coming on with Connect Youth and being the program coordinator. So at Connect Youth, we remain dedicated to our service mandate to assist, support and refer young people in need. So far since, for our fiscal year, since July, we have served one hundred and twenty-one youth aged fourteen to twenty-one with key services including our drop-in program at South Grenville District High School, including lunchtime programming and after-school programming, access to food support, individual support services, basic need support, the youth transitional apartment program and opportunities for youth empowerment and volunteerism. The drop-in continues to provide youth with a safe space as well as basics needs, including food, clothing, hygiene products, non-therapeutic counseling support, social inclusion and life skills training. Since July two thousand seventeen, one hundred and twenty-one youth, fifty-six female and sixty-five males, have accessed our drop-in for a total of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three interactions thus far. So the number of youth joining us on Wednesday afternoons for after-school programming and King's Kitchen remains steady. We have an average of twenty youth joining us on a regular basis. A total of thirty-one youth have attended this program with a total of two hundred and ten visits. At this programming, you have the opportunity to participate in workshops and activities provided by various community partners, including but not limited to the Ontario Provincial Police, Children's Mental Health of Leighton-Grenville, Intermodal House, Lannard-Leighton-Grenville District Health Unit and Assault Response and Care Center. Recently, we've been partnering with the Grenville Police Service or Police Board to send some youth to the Stingers after-school programming. I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but Stingers, the Brockville Police Service has put on an amazing after-school programming every Tuesday. However, we don't currently have the whittle room to send the youth every month. So we've been trying to get a bus together once a month to send the youth. So we filled the bus for the first time in March. We had forty-two youth attend and there are tons of questions about when we're going next and what's going on with that. So a newer program for Connect Youth in the past couple of years is LGBTQ training or programming, sorry. We have two youth that volunteer to kind of chair and co-facilitate a gender and sexuality alliance on Monday afternoons after school. We have thirteen youth who participate on a voluntary basis. They come when they want type thing. And this year, we have had a total of eighty-seven interactions for the GSA. So the group offers space and inclusion to all students regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity or individuality. The group actively organizes and participates in the Day of Silence, bringing students together from grade seven to twelve. At Connect Youth, we are providing individual support to youth, providing advocacy referrals and non-therapeutic interventions to youth in school and in the community. And that remains a priority for Connect Youth. Thus far, twenty individuals have accessed individual services accounting for one hundred and forty interactions. We've made nine direct connections to other community services. Support has been provided forty-nine times. So helping youth to phone, attend or access service. And information about partnering services has been shared on twenty-nine occasions. The number of youth accessing Connect Youth services remains consistent year to year. I feel like I owe the youth a special thanks and our communities for sharing their success stories and inspiring us and myself to continue doing what we do. It has been a pleasure to be part of their journeys. So I've also passed out just kind of a breakdown of our statistics for you. So of that one hundred and twenty-one youth who have walked into my core programming, twenty-nine come from Augusta. Thirty-four come from Edwardsburg Cardinal. Fifty-two from Prescott. One from North Grenville. And unfortunately for unknown, we have quite a struggle getting them to write down their townships. Then I further broke some things down for you. So this represents all the youth who have accessed core programming and includes the individual supports, clothing and food shares in the drop-in. So we have a total of one hundred and twenty-one participants in the drop-in. So it's twenty-eight percent from Edwardsburg Cardinal. And the total of visits is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. We have forty-seven youth accessing food on a regular basis. Twenty-six percent are from Edwardsburg Cardinal and that means seven hundred and five food shares. Forty-nine youth actively access our clothing closet, twenty-one percent from Edwardsburg Cardinal. And we have shared two hundred and seventy-seven items. The GSA has thirteen participants and we have one from Edwardsburg Township. And we have eighty-seven visits.
That's the gender, sexual.
Yeah, the gender and sexuality alliance, yeah. King's Kitchen is our Wednesday night programming. And thirty-one participants, sixteen percent are from Edwardsburg Cardinal. And we have two hundred and ten visits. So our individual supports and services, so we have, we've had twenty individuals accessing for a total of one hundred and forty interactions. We have twenty-four instances of sharing information about a service. We have brought five youth to a youth summit. We have forty-nine instances of supporting youth with accessing service plus supports to the following community involvement. So Real Talk, which is a program in Brockville at Children's Mental Health. We've had five youth go with a total of eleven visits. And then for Stingers, we had forty-two youth attend. And twenty-six percent of them were from Edwardsburg Cardinal. And Youth Let's Talk, which is another program happening at the health unit for some youth engagement to help you feel more comfortable in their communities. And then we have made nine referrals connecting youth to other services. And then for non-referrals, we have had fifty-eight youth just access a non-referral, which could be anything from walking into my door, having a bad day. It doesn't result in a support or a referral or an information. It's just kind of de-escalating the situation and helping them move on with their day. And then I have a brief breakdown of our transitional youth shelter apartment data. So so far this year, we've had fifty-eight referrals to our housing program. We've successfully provided outreach and support to thirty-eight of those youth. We have made eight referrals to other services, provided a hundred and fifty-nine supports and shared ninety-six information shares. So again, the breakdown happens. We've had one youth, we've had twenty-five youth from Brockville, we've had one from Targol. We've had one from Danone Offway, six from Prescott, thirteen from North Grenville and four from other counties. And then nine from unknown. So they were probably just very homeless at that point in time. I would like to point out that we've had two youths successfully transitioned into the Edwardsburg Cardinal township. I don't think it was permanent, but they were here for about three months while they got back on their feet. So that's something to be proud of. So we continue to work with our partners. We're working with St. Paul's Church in Cardinal, looking at doing some summer programming together. They do a hot lunch program on Fridays during the summer. And we're trying to plan to do some work together. They've been looking at doing some rummage sales to raise money for Connect Youth and that type of thing.
And the church in Cardinal, did it not want to get involved with us?
That is the church in Cardinal, yeah. We are working very closely with the other branches of the Anglican Church. And just some things to look forward to at Connect Youth is the continuation of the Stingers programming. Our annual youth fair is coming up where we have over twenty-five community partners come in and the kids circulate through the gym and get connected to any services they need and educated about the services that are out there for them to access.
Okay, so just getting to the grant part of the thing. I just note that in two thousand and sixteen, you approached us for three thousand and I think our grant that year was eight hundred dollars. And in two thousand and seventeen, you approached us with a request for three thousand. And I think we were able to, in two thousand and seventeen, increase the amount to twelve hundred. And I note that on the application that we have before us tonight, it looks like you're requesting two thousand for this year. So just so you know, those are the numbers that we have in front of us for tonight.
We usually do it based on the number of students that access services from your community. It's a cost factor.
So any questions from the table here, anybody?
What is your cost estimate per year participating in your program?
Sorry, I didn't write it this year as an on-the-letter. Sorry, I can get that to you.
And what's your annual budget for programming?
Just the core programming?
Mm-hmm. That's what you're requesting twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just that, yeah.
It's under twenty thousand just because we, most of our money goes to paying staff and transportation. What she didn't say in there is that after King's Kitchen, she drives probably ten kids home, her and Anna too.
Yeah, transportation is a huge part of it.
So they get a transportation allowance and anything above that, we definitely have. So it's a huge expense in our area.
So you have how many staff on? How many are paid position?
Currently, we're at three, three.
Really, and one is covered through United Way, but the other two are funded through donation chances? One's Catholic.
And the other one is called the homelessness partnering strategies through Service Canada. And it, so it pays for.
Three quarters.
Yeah, they both do, have to do with the housing bill. Her position is the one that's totally funded by the United Way for the school programming.
So that leaves one full position needing to be paid, is that what you're saying? Because you have three?
Yeah.
She's paid three that way?
Yeah, well, it's, we like to have part-time staff on the core program for, because Carrie has meetings and administration she needs to do. So we like to hire part-time staff just to do core programming. At present, we haven't. Money's too tight. We're waiting. We have the support worker, housing support worker is in the mix. And I assume with the provincial budget being released, we should hear probably by the end of this week. I'm thinking we'll hear from it. And the Home Depot one, I understand by, well, it was due Friday, this Friday coming. So, and it says June. So, you know, if we have extra dollars, just for whatever reason, like for example, her pay was a little less than our old program coordinator just because of experience, we use that money to hire someone to fill fifteen hours a week.
Now, do you run through a year or is it during the school year? Which?
All year.
Oh, you're.
All year.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Other questions up from the table here before I thank the speakers?
I would say, I was thinking about this overall, that when we first started, we were doing mostly crime prevention and drug, our, we had high drug users at the time. And then, so that was sixteen years ago, and we have evolved to, the drug use, if you leave the twenty-four, or the twenty-seventeen drug, high school drug survey, drugs are way down. And, and it's, it's not, it's a non-factor, but it's a much reduced factor in what we do. So I would say that mental health, though, has gone way up.
And homelessness.
And homeless, well, I guess we're aware of it more now. So those are kind of the main things we're dealing with now.
Any other questions here, folks? Okay, so I just want to thank you for coming.
Thank you, Bradley.
And your presentation, we have your application, we're going to be dealing with the, all of the applications under this grant program, we'll be dealing with them all later on in the agenda tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yeah.
And so now I'm moving on to item five C on the agenda, which is Mr. Phil Berry and a presentation concerning the Second Spencerville Scouting Group. So Mr. Berry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies for coming in late. This is going to be very short. You have our application before you, and I know you're going to be reviewing it later. In the last week, Second Spencerville Scout Group has incurred a capital cost, an unexpected capital cost, very large, namely our equipment trailer we use to transport our equipment to events and to store our equipment was destroyed in last week's windstorm. Replacement of that trailer, we've barely begun to deal with this, so I can't give you any reliable figures. But preliminary investigation indicates would cost us somewhere between five thousand bucks for a secondhand horse trailer, or eight thousand for a new one. I imagine if we'd known this was coming, we would have asked you for more money in the first place. But I wanted to table this, this information so that you could keep it in mind while you're delivering our application. Other than that, I'm also here to answer questions as long as they're not difficult.
Could you tell us what kind of equipment you use in the trailer?
Tents, camping stoves, volleyballs. The equipment itself has survived, so that's not the issue. We have to find a place to keep it under the rain, we haven't done that. It's the trailer itself that was wiped out by a large tree, and it's going to cost us a bunch to replace it.
What was the size of your trailer?
To be honest, I can't tell you. Probably about six by twelve, I think.
So it's, it's one of these trailers that's fully, all sides and top?
It's a, yeah, it's a fully enclosed cargo.
So you use it for both storage and transportation?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions here?
No insurance, none.
Can't afford insurance premiums, and frankly, we weren't expecting this to happen, of course.
So if there's no other questions, you're right, we do have your application in front of us. It looks to me like your application was for a thousand dollars, and I haven't got the past year as well. Last year, your application was for a thousand, I think we were able to allocate five hundred. And looking back, in 2016, your application was for a thousand, and it looks like we were able to allocate twenty, two hundred and fifty. So just so you know, the budget line that we've got this year for staff, if you would please?
Uh, ten thousand.
The budget line on this year's program is ten thousand, and the asks that we're dealing with tonight total thirty-five thousand five hundred. So, I mean, we'll be going through them later in the, in the, in the agenda. So if there are no other questions for Mr. Berry, I'm just going to thank him for coming. Anybody?
I have one question, and that is when you're hauling this trailer, are, are you covered under the assurance from your automobile, or whoever's pulling it?
Typically, I can't give you a clear answer. Typically, one of the parents, one of the volunteers who has a truck that's used for commercial purposes is available to haul the trailer. And under those circumstances, we believe, we believe the vehicle would be covered for a trailer.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Under, under the, the vehicle owner's insurance, which means that the vehicle owner would suffer the claim, yeah?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm going to thank Mr. Berry, you're quite welcome to stay for the discussion later on in the meeting. Okay, so now, I'm going to go on with the agenda, and the next item on the agenda is the discussion items, and the first discussion item concerns number six A, the question of special occasion permits at the Legion Park Pavilion. Now, this is brought forward by Deputy Mayor Taylor, she's left the table now because of her involvement with the Legion. And it's a, it's a request that has come forward based on, would we amend our alcohol policy to permit the Legion Pavilion to be one of the facilities that were eligible for special occasion permits? So there is a briefing note in front of us, and I guess the, the gist of the briefing note finds itself on page three of nine. And on page three of nine, the, the issue clearly is, does Legion Park and Pavilion come away from the list where it says municipal facilities and parks are not eligible, and go to the other list which says that it is eligible? And I guess a couple of pertinent points from the briefing note are found in the policy, where the policy seeks to limit liability for the municipality. So I'll just open the table up for discussion here right now, and I'd like to get a, a quick go around to see where the people stand. Floor's open. Councilor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The considerations that were weighted, that, that left that area not eligible, the, when the policy was approved in 2013, the potential difficulties for fencing and crowd control for the license holder, proximity to more friendly, sorry, proximity to more family-oriented activities such as the private canteen, that perceive dangers of the nearby waterway. I guess my question is, have any of those items been mitigated? And if not, I, they would prevail as concerns for.
I think those are, those were three items that were in the policy within.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
So, so just through you, Mr. Mayor, for staff, have any of those, have any of those items been mitigated and not located?
No, there's nothing changed.
Is there further discussion here?
Yeah, when I was reading the, the document, it got into the details, down into weeds about who would be serving alcohol, and whether or not they had smart serve training, and specified only one person on the bar would be required to have smart serve training. And I think if you've got crowds, and crowds, the crowd control issue is precedent here, but if you've got crowds, and I've worked many of these kinds of things, and if the bar is an active bar, it's very difficult to have only one person with smart serve training. Because that, that training requires the, the server to anticipate whether or not a person's had too much to drink, is underage, or et cetera, et cetera. And there's also the occasion where a person in the audience is, or in the crowd, is getting too much alcohol, but is being purchased by a friend, you know, taking back three or four drinks or whatever. So I would think that if we get around to approving this, we should look closely at the numbers of people who are required to have smart serve training.
Okay, so just to clarify your position here, you're not, first of all, can you give us a page reference where it says one smart serve?
That, that didn't get a lot of attention. It's on the, page six of nine.
Six, yeah.
Okay, so, so, okay, so I just want to clarify Mr. Bradley's position. Your position is that if we get around to moving it, then we should revisit the policy. But in the absence of, of revisiting, excuse me, in the absence of moving the Legion Park and Pavilion up to the eligible locations list, you're satisfied that we, we don't need to revise, do a revision to the policy?
No, except that I concur with Mr. Councilor Barrett in the sense that those three key provisions should be addressed, and we need to have fine side, find some way. According to, I mean, my interpreting that map correctly, we need to find some way that we can control the crowd and have it not interfere with other activities that are going on in the park area.
Of course, it's not our job to control the crowd.
No, no, it's the.
Yeah.
License holder.
Yeah, and, and the license holder is basically, I mean, this area that we're looking at is a wide open area, if I can put it that way. And proximity to the water is mentioned, proximity to family occasion.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion here, Councilor?
I still have, like, basically with, with what was presented before, the three concerns, you know, proximity openness, family oriented, and so forth with the events. I also have a question about, you know, I, I don't know the hours of Legion, but I would think that, you know, events held there would be competing with the Legion. And I know that there are some, you know, you, you get some events there, and you get people coming, I know, we had the experience of having a public meeting held there, and a gentleman was, had to be asked to leave, very, very cordial and so forth, and, and, you know, at the township, I know, we, we've outlined events, and the insurance that people have to have as well, you know, that there's, it's not, the smart serve, smart serve person must be behind the bar at all times, doesn't have to be the same one. I think that's for clarification, and.
But can, can I stop you just there, because I think you're raising an interesting point. And your point is that by moving it up on the list, it wouldn't just be the Legion that could apply for the special occasion permit, any user could apply for a special occasion permit.
Any user could.
And, which might it be in conflict with the Legion?
It, it could be, you know what I mean, at certain times, and then you get two.
Yeah.
Two groups and things, I, I, I don't know, I, I think there was a reason for it being excluded in the beginning, and where was, I had something I put council, there's, there's got to be, okay, eligible events, there's, I, I put an exclamation mark.
Page reference?
It's on page two of nine, eligible events. In order to have a special occasion event, you have public events which are not conducted by registered charity or nonprofit organizations, must be designated as an event of municipal significance by council. So that still comes back to our, it comes back to our table, you know what I mean, like a, is a, is a gathering of the, the family tree gathering, or something like that, you know, that type of thing, is it a municipal significance? You know, I, I'm just, so the sale of alcohol facilities or parks is strictly prohibited without a permit issued by the liquor control board, so, and then council event approval, so it is considered municipal significance by council. That last, the next thing down, page two, the last, last sentence there, council event approval, council reserves the right to reject an application regardless of who the user may be.
Right. But I think the purpose of this, of this policy is to provide staff with day-to-day guidance so that they're not dealing with these things every, every single time. Certain municipal facilities are just deemed to be off-limits, period, don't bother applying, and others are deemed to be eligible for permits provided they meet certain criteria.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, there's another section in there where they're talking about the hours of operation, people have it, start in the afternoon, and if, you know, the, the air outage committee can meet, the family tree can meet, and it can be going to, you know, one-thirty at night in some cases, and beyond, and if it's New Year's special, you know, like at some of our events, special gate committee can. So, I don't know, it, you know, and when are a lot of these special events going to be held? Weekends, probably, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or, and, and again, I'm thinking it's in conflict with Legion right next to our, I, I, you know, I, I don't know what their hours are either, but I.
Okay, other comments, Councilor Smell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Would we have a guesstimate of how many requests we could have at, or a permit down there? My knowledge, we've never had one, but it, but it's on the list of not being eligible, so that may well be one.
Other comments? The issue is fairly simple, either it changes position or it doesn't change position in the policy, that's the issue. Looking for, okay, once, once around the table, yes or no? Straight issue, does it change position to be a knowledgeable occasion, or does it not? And once around the table, yes or no? We're going to start with Mr. Robertson, get him off the, make, make, make a commitment here.
I had another question, Andy. Probably you're talking about a function in the gazebo, the building with the red, red roof inside the Legion. Would, would that be required, would you be required to fence and designate the area so that your people can't wander out? I don't know, it's a tricky question. I, I'd say no.
I see the benefits to both sides, I see the, the risk in both, so I'm going to say no.
So I got a no, and a no in the A?
No, there's three no's.
Three no's? Oh, sorry. You're a no.
And, and for a recent stated no.
Okay, so I think that that resolves the issue. Okay, so guidance to staff? I think Deputy Mayor Taylor has her answer.
If I may make a comment, I just was reviewing the AGCO regulations because I was curious about the smart serve thing, and certainly their regulations require that all volunteers, employees, and other staff involved hold a certificate of server training, so that trumps anything in our policy, any of them.
Yeah, I read it on the front page, and why don't we just say the SOPs comply with the COK?
Okay, so I'm moving on to item seven on the agenda. Seven A is the first quarter's building report. That report has been circulated. I want to thank staff for presenting the report, I really like this format. Two new houses underway, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of project value Questions, if any?
No, yeah.
I, I.
Go ahead.
I have a couple for the building inspector. The permit fees, are they calculated on some kind of a formula that you have related to overall value, or, or size of property, or, how are they calculated? Because if you look, there's a, a project value of twelve thousand, and it's got a fee of four hundred and five dollars. And then there's a project of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, that's got a fee of four hundred and fifty dollars, so I'm just trying to figure out the relationship there.
So each of those, for example, in January, that twelve thousand could be a variety, it's not just one permit, it could be six permits there. So.
So it's a multiplicity?
Correct. So on a new housing unit, the first main floor is a buck thirty a square foot, if you're doing renovations, it's forty cents a square foot, commercial, industrial, like cultural is forty cents a square foot.
Okay, so you have a schedule of something?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Hopkins? Hearing none? You're off to a, not as big a start as last year, but you're off to a start. Just a quick question, because the total project values under residential is six eighty-seven five hundred, but there's only two of them that are shown to be new homes. So can I, and, and the, and the new home value is four forty-five, so there's around two hundred and some thousand, that'd be mostly renovations, whether. And under demolitions, do the, do the demolitions include houses as well as barns and things like that, or do we issue permits for barns? Demolition permits?
I have issued permits for barns, there's none there presently, but I have issued permit, demolition permits for barns.
Okay, so there are no other questions, I'm going on as to the next information item, which is seven B, which is. item, which is seven B, which is the first quarter bylaw report. And are there any questions with this report? I know 29 new cases this year, and cleaning up some of the ones from 2017. Any questions? Go ahead.
I have one question there, the illegal dumping, are we actually catching culprits? Because I know there was a memo in the notes that said that you actually go through the garbage where it's dumped illegally and you try to find any kind of clues or hints and pursue the perpetrator, I guess, of the crime. Have you been successful in doing that and actually scavenging the garbage to get the background view?
I have not, but I'm trying to get the contract, my law officer to do as much as he can.
Okay.
We have not been successful in this present year, we were successful last year in a couple of those attempts. It's very difficult, Councillor, just, people have a strange way of denying things and he circumments every way possible to get it done, if there's a way he can get her done, but it's a fine line of catching that and spending thousands of dollars to do it, right? And trying to find out where that cost effectiveness is, but he, he does his very best to do it, trust me.
Go on, go ahead.
And just to echo the mayor's comments, a very positive report, overall, it's always interesting to read and you notice the significant results that are occurring. And I see there, there's some places where, again, garbage being the issue, and it says garbage and debris removed by township, garbage removed by township and so forth, in a couple instances, garbage picked up by township and so forth. I'm assuming that solves the problem and we're picking it up, is it because, I guess we're just picking up garbage that's just somewhere on the side of the road and, or not in some majority or being in a bad, but is that?
In these situations, those ones that you're referring to, they were alongside the road and people, I mean, our options to leave them, right, for days, or to go and clean it up and then try to fix the problem after that, right? So the township is very active in making sure we keep our township clean, we take great pride in that, so.
And if I could just add to that, I really appreciate that because I know personally I've passed on two complaints that I've received from residents of sofas, chairs and household furnitures being dumped at the side of the road. And the fact that the township responds so quickly, I think, is very important because if that's allowed to accumulate, it just reads the wrong message. And so I just wanted for you to pass on to staff and the CAO, I really appreciate it being picked up quickly.
That is the operations department and they are fantastic doing that, so.
Any other comments with regard to this report? I wish there was some way of catching the perpetrators in the act, but I know how hard that is to. All right, seven C then, the first quarter treasury report, up for discussion, it's on the table, questions of treasurer? Deputy Mayor.
I hope that the tenders close tomorrow, more time for the.
Tenders for?
For the Walker Street, Resplee Road, Mainwood Road. Not Walker, sorry, Resplee, Mainwood and Adams. At four o'clock, yeah. So they'll be open in here? Here in the council chamber at four o'clock, yeah. Hope it's open, that's for the hot mix thing.
Just, any questions with, first of all, the financial report on the first page? Go ahead.
I just ask a question, I, the assets, we're looking at assets, let's look at the port, investment in port, and we've got March of the prior year, we've got, I think, 19 million in March of 2017, and then we've got current year, March 31st, 2018, it's showing 31,737, so it's a 32 million, so it went from 2018 to 32, $12 million asset interest. And I guess my question is, I know we added the two new bins, which was 2 million, but I just, I don't know how we arrived at the, you know, like a $12 million drop.
It's actually just a 2 million, the March, the March number was before the 2017, the 2016 year end, the 2018 number for March. Actually, I have the statements, or draft statements from the port, so I was able to adjust the number to reflect the 2017 change in equity, so it's the difference between the 31 and the 29.
And a lot of that is the grant money now that's been held in a billions coming in as an investment.
It's starting to come in, yeah. So there's been big changes with, with the port for sure over the year.
Go ahead.
The other major bone I really have to pick is, I think our reserves are showing something like eight, like eight dollars less this year than they were last year.
That's true.
Anyway, that's, that's pretty good.
Other questions? If I can just, one quick one, I'm looking at taxes receivable line and comparing December 31 to March 31, and I know that the tax bills were just issued very close to the end of March, so I'm assuming that's what we're seeing there.
Yes, and since that date, or since Mar, the end of March, we've actually received an additional, check, an additional $71,000 has been received in the first week of April.
71,000?
Yeah.
So, but that only, that would reduce the 938 to 9?
Yeah, and a lot of the additional current receive, taxes would be reflective of the increase in assessment and new individual, like, you know, additional assessment, so we build a lot more than what we did last year.
Okay, I've been through the long-term debt sheet and that's very interesting, so any other questions before I move on? Hearing none, moving on then to seven D, which is the first quarter reserves and reserve funds update. And the briefing note explains that a lot of the 2017 adjustments haven't yet been made, right?
Correct.
But you say that in your briefing note that the audit has been carried out, is that correct?
We did finish audit this past week, the auditors were here two days, but we haven't finalized the surplus or deficits in either the township or the water.
Okay, and just one, a quick question with regard to the last paragraph of the briefing note, those rates as of March the 5th, 1.91 percent, and the consolidated reserve fund account is earning 1.70, those are new rates following the last bank account adjustment? Or?
They're as of the Mar, as of March, so, yes, as of the last Canada adjustment, yeah.
Yeah, we do, we do see an adjustment.
Yeah, we do.
Any questions with regard to this briefing note?
Reserve funds?
Yes.
May I just, may I just ask a question, it may be silly, please don't judge me on this question, but I guess it ticked my fancy reading something about the Morsburg leader recently that the water towers in both villages of Airquad and Morsburg are going to have to be replaced, I think it was something 1957 or something, will. And I guess I look at our reserve funds here and I'm thinking of, you know, our wastewater, cardinal water and so forth, I'm just thinking, big picture, plants, you know what I mean, like we've got a plan for down the road, look at the long term, and I see in our reserve funds, we've got for cardinal, very bottom there, we've got cardinal water, I think it's showing that's 533,000 total, right? And cardinal wastewater, 357,000, correct?
Correct.
Reserve for, for the rainy day fund. Now, again, let's look at our lifespan, the lifespan of those plants, I guess I'm just thinking this is, that's not a lot of, am I right?
It's not, and the other thing that isn't showing in this schedule, but the council recently just had a decision made to proceed with Walker Street, and as a result of, of the lack of funding application money, a lot of these reserves are going to be drawn down to complete that project in 2018.
So we hope when the time comes.
Well, there's no question that Walker Street is going to be a big drawdown on these two.
It will.
What is the cost roughly of refurbishing a water tower? I wonder if Mr. Grant can give us some sort of an idea, is it in the order of 10 or 15 or 20 million?
I wouldn't hazard a guess at this particular stage, I'm not sure what Airquad and Morsburg are actually doing.
Did the article in the leader give you any kind of?
No, just a picture of it.
I think, Mr. Mayor, there was an article in the Prescott paper regarding the replacement of the Prescott water tower, and it was in the order of three, three to five million.
Oh, three to five, so it's not upper than the 10s then?
No.
But that may include land too.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know what that, that's kind of a ballpark number, you don't know what it includes, no.
Any other discussion here before I move on? Well, thank you very much for the quarterly report there, and you'll be updating now these reserve and reserve funds with year-end results, and we'll see that on the June one.
You'll first see a action item come to committee and council to give authorization for those surplus and deficits, so once that's been done, I'll transfer the money and give it up to you.
Fair enough. Okay, so then I'm onto seven E, which is the first quarter budget variance report, this is the first quarter, so a little bit early to have a look at trends, but is there anybody, does anybody have any questions here? And do you have anything that you wanted to highlight out of this?
Nothing, a big surprise, really, I mean, I think from some of the disbursement journals the first, last few months, you might have seen there's been a fair amount of public works vehicle expenses for several repairs on some of our aging vehicles and equipment, seeing some worse for wear for our winter control. We haven't started any of our capital projects, but we're tendering those and that'll soon start rolling out as well, so.
Questions, other questions? Hearing none, we're going to move on here. Go ahead.
I just, I just, you mentioned, I had a question mark of winter control, and that's on page three, and I see there, I think it's 128,000, and so that's 47, let's say 50 percent of our, so we're looking like we're in good, good shape. With the next.
Yeah, it's more than last, it's certainly more than last year's actual, but in terms of where we're at, 50 percent is, I mean, some of that will be sand and salt that's already in the, in the pit, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so I'm moving on then, and the next is item seven F, which I think is an information item concerning bank deposit procedure anticipating the closure of the Spencerville branch. So are there any questions with this information item? Everybody understands what's going to happen here, they're still going to be moving money, I guess, to the Prescott branch, cash and checks.
Just cash.
For some period of time.
Just cash, we have our scanner now.
Oh, you have the scanner?
Yeah.
I still haven't figured out what happens to my checks. I'm really interested, I'm going to go to the bank and ask for copies and see if they can pull them out of nowhere. Okay, seven G is a briefing note concerning the 2018 tax rates, and we now have the county tax rates in here. So, questions, if any? So these are the rates that will be coming forward in the bylaw? Questions? Hearing none, going to move on. Just a quick question. Oh, so we do. Quick question, under financial considerations, is there a decimal missing there?
There is.
I kind of thought.
Councillor, I pointed it out before.
Where, where does the decimal go?
It's 0.01.
I thought so. All right, so there's a recommendation, committee recommends that council approve the 2018 tax rates and direct staff to draft a bylaw. Over please for the recommendation, Councillor Smale, and seconded by Councillor Morrell. And of course, we've been through this many times before during budget. So, who's in favor of the recommendation? Recommendation is carried, so the bylaw will come, we anticipating the bylaw for May or June?
April.
April, but we don't send the bill until June?
No, we don't send the bill until August, but, you know.
Oh, that's right, but you can calculate your bill, actually you can calculate it as of tonight.
And if I may, one of the reasons we put this forward, what we do is because we get regular requests, what's my tax bill going to be in 2018, so once we've got the bylaw established, we can give people very accurate numbers.
Right, as to the rates. All right, now, the highlight of the seven H, the community grants and donations program for 2018, noticing that we have $10,000 available and requests for $35,000 plus in-kind support, which the staff has now put an approximate value of 28,000 on, and I kind of appreciate the staff doing that because although it's not a cash expenditure, it's a time expenditure, and every one of those in-kind grants that we give do affect the organization to a greater or lesser extent. So, I'm at the page that has at the title, the title at the top is 2018 Community Grants and Donations, and I'm going to be focusing most of my attention there, I've read the briefing notes for each one of the requests, I'm, if I, if I say something out of turn, I'd appreciate being corrected before I get too far offstream, but I'm going to only just focus on the, on the one page for now. I do have some comparatives for 2016 and 2015, excuse me, 17 and 18 that I can use from time to time during the discussions. Now, we can start at the top of the list and go down, or if somebody has a different idea, I'd like to hear it, the chair is looking for direction as to how to approach this task, it's always an interesting exercise. Anybody have any other suggestions than starting at the top and going down? Another suggestion I'm going to make just to confuse everybody is there is a number of these that if we can reach consensus on, I think we can have a philosophical discussion and eliminate two or three just by philosophical discussion.
Timeliness?
Pardon?
Timeliness?
Timeliness might be one thing, there's a couple of other concepts that I would bring into play here, I'm going to say one right off the bat, and I don't mind saying it, and we did have a presentation from the South Grenville Chamber of Commerce, and I understand that it is 125 years, it's something to celebrate, but having been a businessman for 25 years, I would never have, as the president of my chamber of commerce, gone to municipality for money because businessmen are supposed to be able to carry their own costs, I'm being blunt, write the check and swallow it up, eh Dave, it's all, it's all, it's all expensed, right? Provided it's something to spend it against, which we do run into from time to time. Now, Deputy Mayor, you mentioned the idea of timeliness, you want to expound on that?
Well, as I was reading through the stats, summary, some came in late, so, and the other could be also location, 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 focus on township as opposed to outside township.
Okay, and what are you specifically referring to?
Well, there's the Ottawa Valley, and then Curland Center in Creston. I'd say John Ambly serves the area, but I don't know whether there was. I'd say John Ambulance serves the area, but I don't know whether there's other similar things with us, but anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to test the table and see if there's an appetite to eliminate anything just before we begin the discussion. If there's any other appetite to remove, just straight off the bat. Do you... Maybe we'll just get you to outline which requests came in late, if you would, Rebecca, please.
The one the Grenville County Historical Society arrived March 26th.
Grenville County Historical Society.
Yes, that arrived three days late.
Just don't lie, find it.
You're the top.
Fourth now.
Okay, so it's late by three days. I know that if my taxes were late by three days, the Treasurer would penalize me.
That is actually the only request we received late this year.
Oh, that's the only one that was late?
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I can agree with the Deputy Mayor that, you know, let's knock off the ones that are perhaps outside our reach. Like, you know, the Prescott Curling Center. You know, the Prescott, there may be some people curling from our township, but is that not a stand on your own venture, like a curling club? You've got members, you've got dudes, you pay your dues, you raise the rates if you got it, you got to replace curling the curling refrigeration system. It's just like anything else, you got to look down the road and put money in waiting for it, you know?
Yeah. It's generally a self-supporting operation. And there are, as I was a pre-member there for years, there are, if they get into sort of capital expenditures that are quite sizable and beyond their capability, there are organizations across Canada which support curling, which can be applied to get grants, so.
They've just done a major capital rework of that entire curling club, yeah? So I would assume that this would be... And maybe, Rebecca, again, if you could help us out a little bit there, is there... And I said, I've read the briefing note, can't remember everything I read. Is there any kind of a justification as to why it would be coming to us? Or is it some kind of a kids' program that we're being asked to subsidize? Not, not the case?
No, no. We're actually supporting the club's legacy board, which offsets costs of rebuilding, curling stones, sharpenings, ice scrapers, and updating equipment.
Operation, operation. Anybody have an appetite to want to speak further to that one? I'm looking for direction here.
I'm going to take it off.
Off? Okay, so that's off. Anything else comes off?
I also have the St. Lawrence Ottawa Valley Pony Club and St. John Ambulance, right off online.
Anybody else? St. Lawrence?
Pony Club and St. John Ambulance.
Ponies.
They go hand in hand.
I got consensus with St. Lawrence on Ottawa Valley Canadian Pony Club. I got consensus to remove that one?
Yep.
It comes off.
The other thing that I had on mine was... Curling, Upper Canada. I have only in-kind support.
True.
Curling.
Okay, now, the only thing that I would say about that one is that we have been giving them money for each of the last three years, I think.
Yep.
And I think it's been about $500 each year.
No, it was... Oh, yeah, it was $1650 per...
Okay, so before we lose it from Councillor Smale, Councillor Smale also had earmarked St. John's Ambulance of Leeds and Grenville as a removal. Are we sure we want to do that, considering that St. John's Ambulance is a strictly volunteer organization?
What's it say about Lander?
Well, that's just the... It encompasses all three counties. Leeds, Grenville, Lander, County.
I kind of think I should leave it at just me.
Okay, well, let's leave it on and see if it survives a couple of rounds.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just point out that on the Deputy Clerk's briefing note, that was one of the ones that doesn't fall within our prescribed categories of our policy.
Does not?
Does not.
Okay, tell me why it falls outside?
Because it's not a township sector program. And there's no direct relationship with township residents.
Okay, so then if it falls outside the policy, then it's gone. We all agree? Is there consensus on that? All right, so that comes off.
So, question on the St. Lawrence River Institute, the two-day water seminar that they do, is it always them, I thought? Was Association that did that?
No.
It's through them? Through them, okay.
They're the instigator, St. Lawrence River Institute, but there's various organizations participate in it, and the South Nation is one. By the way, also, St. Lawrence Ambulance spent two days sitting there, too.
St. John's Ambulance?
Yeah, it does a lot of things in the community. And I'm sure they do at the Spensiville Fair, too.
Yes, now, the way it's been explained to me, when they come to something like the Spensiville Fair, they rely on... They don't invoice the Spensiville Fair, it's they're relying on a donation. Now, that's the way it's been explained to me.
And they may get one from St. Lawrence River Institute for the Children's Water Festival, too.
Right.
But I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any other suggestions for total elimination before I start? Okay, so... Go ahead.
That's, sorry, I was just going to say the ATV club.
And you know, the thing that hit me about the Johnstown ATV Club is, again, it's adults. I'm not so sure that, you know, that we have an appetite for that.
And it falls outside of our range, so that's almost if we're going to cut one for that reason, we kind of got to cut them all for that reason.
Except we gave two hundred and sixteen.
Giving them a fair amount of in-kind support, $1,500 worth of in-kind support.
Actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, on that in-kind, I don't think that that's a reasonable request.
Which, the in-kind?
Their in-kind is not reasonable. They're asking for staff and equipment support and the use of a dump truck, including the fuel and an operator to deliver gravel to their trail.
What?
Yeah.
No, no.
And I mean, it's one of the reasons we went to the effort of putting a dollar for them besides the taxes. That is not a reasonable request.
Okay, but it's not reasonable in two senses. First of all, from the request itself, and secondly, from the dollar amount. Okay, so let's deal with that one right now, then. Do I have consensus that the Johnstown ATV Club comes out, too?
Yep.
Okay, so the Johnstown ATV Club comes out, and that's both the grant request and the in-kind request. Fair enough? You have consensus there? All right. So that's another one gone.
The Art Scene, that's 100% business, is it not? Do they not get support through the Spensiville Business Association?
Answer to that question is no.
No, they don't. And yes, it is a business, but it is a not-for-profit and operated by co-op. So no one, I mean, they pay in, pay their rent and do all that kind of good stuff, but it's not a foolish profit. As a cooperative, it's for profit for each individual artist.
Yeah, but it barely covers operating expenses. They barely, I mean, they... From each thing that gets sold, a percentage goes to the expenses, and they barely cover their expenses.
Did we come to the conclusion we're taking out the Grenville Chambers of Commerce?
I'm waiting for direction.
I'm okay to remove that?
I have a zero, you're second.
No.
Chair's looking for direction? It's coming out?
Yep.
Oh, you heartless folks. Looking for more direction here.
St. Lawrence, or sorry, South Edwardsburg Recreation Association, the in-kind for the flowers and the Millennium Park, isn't that something we've done on a regular basis since that park's been there?
Yes.
And that's not a... That's something that we made a communities and bloom fund? If there's such thing, is that a council? No, I...
But if I may, we reviewed their application, it was very detailed, what they wanted to do, and we felt after we'd gone through it in some detail that their request for in-kind is more than offset by the sweat equity, if I can put it that way, that they give us to maintain our parks. That's why we can put a dollar value there. To us, it's a wash, we do for them, but they also do for us, and it's pretty reasonable, honestly.
So we're going to continue to do that, then, the in-kind and stuff? So basically, they're asking for the dollar amount, which also did not fall under...
Well, they have several, many, many, and many things they wanted to use for, and basically what they're asking us to do is to fund half of those many things.
So 1525 represents half of what they're asking for?
And that's the stones, the flowers, that's all of that.
Yeah.
Last year, we gave them 500. And we put 500, decide for this year, just to get started here. South Edwardsburg Recreation Association. We gave them 500 last year, we put 500 there, give us a number to start with this year.
So we're adding 500 temporarily there?
Yes, temporarily. Now, who's got the calculator today?
The Treasurer, because that makes sense.
Treasurer?
I've got 500 as the total so far.
You're with us so far.
We've watched you in past years.
Just to comment on the Historical Society, when Aubrey, the secretary's husband, had been in intensive care, died of cancer, so that may be one of the reasons why that application was late.
Oh, that's right, he just died.
Well, that just makes us all go away. We should just have that one in there.
Well, I'll make it feel good. I'll make it feel good, the second one. I can go along Grenville Militia for the $0 and in-kind of 126. I think we should agree with that one.
Okay, would the Treasurer allow that one then to the list?
That one again.
I think we can get consensus there.
And Grenville Historical Society, it's a low ask.
Grenville Historical Society.
There's one down.
Yes. I think that's, you know, it's a low ask, and it is, falls within the...
We gave them 275 last year. Can we give them the same as last year, 275?
I think I'm good with 300. Like, we haven't got that far into this yet.
Okay, 300 for Grenville Historical.
Isn't an option, you know?
We gave them 250 last year. Oh, that was yours, though. 275 last year.
Yeah. That's the one, last year, we ended up with $100, and we wondered what to do with it. We split 250 to two different organizations.
Was that the one?
Yeah.
Coming down the list here, the next one I see is Spensiville English Country Dance Club. It looks like we didn't, either we didn't have a request from them last year, but we didn't give them anything.
But their in-kind is $2,248.
And that's upstairs, you say?
They're looking for cash this year.
And if I may, without offending my Treasurer, who is a member, it is also adult recreation. I struggle with those. So I think I should pay for all.
Yes.
With $2,248 in in-kind, I'd say a $0.
$0 there?
$3, sorry, ma'am.
But we'll recognize the in-cash request?
Just to dance.
Thank you.
That's just the whole...
You can dance, I'm going to turn off the heat.
Turn the heat on, because of the use of the space.
Okay, so I'm losing control.
He actually missed Friends of the Windmill.
Yes?
Yeah.
Go ahead, your suggestion?
I'm looking at volunteering there on the side, so I'm not sure whether I need to declare conflict now or not.
You're not...
I'm not there yet.
You're not...
I'm not on the board.
You have no community interest, like...
Yeah, that's true.
I'm okay with the 500 in the...
A new group in there, and they're pretty active apparently.
So we're putting 500 there to start?
We had 275 last year.
Yes, I noticed that, but...
We could bring it down later, right?
Yes, we can. Now, Spensiville Mill Foundation is asking 2650. We gave them 1,000 last year, plus in-kind of 6,360. For a first round, can we put in 1,000?
1,000 dollars.
1,000 dollars, first round. Where are we at, Treasurer?
What did you just say?
Where are we at?
No, well, what did you just add?
Spensiville Mill Foundation, 1,000 dollars.
1,000? 2,300.
Excuse me?
2,300.
Too soon to ask. 2,300?
2,300, we only approved four, so.
All right, I'm going down here.
I said I got my zero.
Art Scene. Art Scene didn't, it looks like last year there was nothing granted to Art Scene at all. No request in 2016 or 2017, this is a new application. Can we put in 500 for Art Scene? They do attract people to town.
What was their request for, Rebecca? I know it's right in front of us, but I thought you would have memorized it all.
Their cash request is to offset the Todd signage on the 416, advertise in the visitor's guide, design and print wrath cards, distribute wrath cards, cover Sunday afternoon coffeehouse events, education courses and supplies, and advertising for courses.
Todd's signage we do benefit from.
And through, Mr. Mayor, do you know what the cost of Todd signage is per year?
1,200.
Okay, it's 1,200. That's a, as you said, a pretty... They'll benefit to drive traffic.
Okay, so can we put in 500 in first round?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so 500 in first round. Art Cruze, 416 Art Cruze, everybody know what 416 Art Cruze is? Brings people.
Two are old and letting their go. I'm okay with leaving that 250, and I think that's what they are advertising and stuff.
250?
We did that last year.
That's what they want, so they're asking for it.
Spensiville Business and Community Connections, we gave them 130 last year.
And they're asking for 126? Interesting.
I'd go with that. I'm making 125.
They've always, they always ask for the 126, and I think last year we had like a random number and we topped it out, but they've always asked for the 126 in in-kind, and we've always granted that.
So is that the same, the Business Association, basically?
Oh, yeah, yes, it is, yes, yes. So much shall we go, Steve. So it's 130? Putting it in at 130 so the Treasurer doesn't have to deal with odd digits. St. John's Choir. St. John's Choir, 500 dollars granted last year.
That's for the band that came in?
Yeah.
And that's a community event?
Okay, 500. South Grenville Bluegrass Festival, asking five. They asked five last year, we gave them two. I know that the ask is based on what they... I'm just going to put this out. I know it's based on what they pay for the Drumming Building and the use of the fairgrounds. I'm trying to work a deal on the side where they get a little bit of a break on that $5,000 invoice that they get from the fair board. But we did give them 2,000 last year, does bring an awful pile of people in the community.
Put 2,000.
Okay, we'll put 2,000 in then. And now Cardinal Festival Committee. It looks like in 2016, we gave them 1,000, and it looks like 2017, there was no request. Am I right about that, there's no request?
Can I give a brief on that? I know I'm kind of out of this, the existing festival committee that we've all known of for years, and the ladies that have done all the work have resigned, so there's going to be a committee established, and they're starting with your banking account.
So can we give them 1,000 then?
Why is that? Yeah, there was nothing signed over to us. So we're starting, the group is starting from scratch.
The other group is gone?
Yep. I'm only working with volunteers to make sure these community events have happened in Cardinal, at least continue to happen. So where they, what's the deal? I don't have time to confirm with that.
So, question. When we cash flow this cash, we're not cash flowing to individuals, are we? We're cash flowing to corporate entities or some kind of entity?
Yeah, they group.
A group?
Yeah, usually. I mean, normally, they would have their own bank account. I wasn't aware that the festival committee had disbanded and reformed. So, I'm not sure what state they're at with respect to bank accounts.
Are reformation?
Yeah.
Bank accounts in play.
Big pardon?
Bank accounts in play for the community accounts, like we've used for other things.
But it's under the festival committee, not under ours?
That, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so all you're saying is that there's no money in the bank account?
We reopened, and we opened our own account. So, this is a new entity. This is the new festival committee. We've kept the same name, because people don't like changing with names, so, but we've all experienced that. So, we've left the name the way it is, and we are moving ahead to make sure these events continue to happen.
Okay, but I, I wanna go back to stuff. Does the new committee have a bank account?
Yes, it has a community account, like, all, like the old festival committee did.
I don't understand how they got a bank account.
I do the same name. If it was the same name the last time, how do you get another account?
Different signing authorities?
Well.
Same bank?
No, the reason I'm asking is because the last go-round, the entity that was looking for a bank account could not get a bank account without having articles of incorporation.
We don't need articles of incorporation of a community account. Community accounts fall under different banners.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
I got the community account, I'm gonna have it.
And so, what we don't know is what was left in the old bank.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's irrelevant to this new committee. It's bottom line, we're starting some. That's not our issue to, to deal with. We just know that these events happen.
Okay, you need a number to go in this block, in this box here.
What are the, what are the headline events for the Cardinal Festival Committee? They do Canada Day, Labor, Labor Day. And, uh, the chill, do they do the winter thing? No, no winter thing. So, it's the two?
Currently, that's what has been existing. This committee's looking to add events and different things, but currently, that's, yeah, our focus.
I'm kinda wondering if there's just a miscommunication there somehow.
No, thanks, got the communication now from the old bank account to the new one?
Sorry?
From the old committee to the new committee? Yeah, there's no miscommunication.
Let, let's put a thousand bucks, see how we look.
I would say let's wait till we find out. Well, I mean, we've given money to this group in the past. It's got it.
And that, that committee, that committee quit raising funds. Used their dollars from the last kick in the year that they were down there. It was all over Facebook for asking for new committee members. They, I'm assuming ran their account, and there was nothing left to give. They stopped fundraising.
They haven't asked for our money in two years.
Because they were dead?
Right.
Looks like in twenty sixteen, we gave them a thousand.
Okay.
Thousand. Okay, so, let's move on. Put a thousand in there for now, and we'll see where we are when we get to the bottom of it.
Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, if we can just speak to the in-kind request on that one. Uh, one of the things they've asked is for the use of the port trolley. Um, and we've spoken with Port GM, and he's really not keen on that idea. So, I just wanted to let you know that that request probably cannot be put forward.
Okay, so, um.
Did that request not appeal to Port?
Well, we called the Port GM and asked him, and he said, no.
No, no, I mean, like, we can't do that here.
I think we can legitimately tell the group that's asking for it that it's not available.
Was that priced into the twelve fifty?
Go back and look, did we, because we were thinking we'd have to float it from Johnstown to Cardinal, and.
I guess, I guess the only thing that I wanna say with regard to that is that, remember that we get two similar trolleys from the Spencerville Fair Board that they bring down County Road forty-four at their expense and their risk for Port Day.
You'd better remind the Port GM of that.
I may do that. I may do that.
I've just passed along the message.
Yep.
Don't shoot the message.
No, no, I'm not. Okay, uh, so I'm, I'm moving beyond the Cardinal Festival Committee to Spencerville Skating Club. Last year, the allocation was five hundred dollars. Five hundred again? Okay, Cardinal Youth Center, last year, the allocation was twelve hundred. We try twelve hundred for this year, first round?
I mean, how, what are they, I'm just thinking another five hundred for them. Would they school drop their program, the others? Well, that's a second.
Okay, so, for Cardinal Youth Center, I'm putting in the twelve hundred, the same as last year, till we get through this first round. Now, we're at second Spencerville South Scout Group. Mr. Murray has made his presentation. Uh, last year, the allocation, the grant allocation was five hundred dollars. I don't have the past history in front of me, but he's also asking for in-kind of twenty-five hundred. Well, first of all, we assume that the twenty-five hundred in-kind is okay. Can I mark that okay? All right, now, the second Spencerville Scout Group, what number shall I put here, first round? Five hundred again?
Uh, well, about, a thousand dollars. So, is that, the, the, the original ask submitted on, in our agenda package, doesn't include the reason for Mr. Murray's attendance here this evening, so they've had a catastrophic loss of them, so, for our first, for our first time around, let's just see where.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put in a thousand on first round. Connect Youth Inc., last year, the allocation was twelve hundred dollars. Put it back, same number?
Yeah, I'm thinking eight hundred or a thousand.
Can I put it in a thousand?
Thousand.
Consensus at a thousand?
Yeah.
Is there a crossover between the Cardinal Youth Center and the Connect Youth and other stuff?
No, I don't think so. All right, now, first Cardinal Beaver Cubs. Last year, the allocation was five hundred.
I'd say five hundred.
Five hundred?
Did their trailer get knocked, get crushed in the winter?
No, theirs was. So, treasurer, where am I at?
Over budget.
What? Already?
Ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Over?
No, that's your total, ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty. Your budget's ten grand.
We're over by eight hundred.
Ten thousand?
With, with five hundred for the Beavers?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where we're, we'd stop.
Okay, so I shouldn't have asked that question so soon. Well, let's go down. Let's, uh, let's finish this, uh, and go through the first round, and then go back. So, Girls Inc. of Upper Canada.
Last year?
Last year's allocation was five hundred.
Five hundred.
Put them in at five hundred again. And Cardinal Outdoor Rink. Now, last year, this is the first time we've had an application from Cardinal Outdoor Rink, I believe. Is that correct?
This is the first time that the application has come in. So, what happened is the Cardinal Youth Center started the Cardinal Outdoor Rink, okay? Then it passed that project on to the ECBA. The ECBA is now folded, so the residents of Cardinal have formed the Outdoor Rink Committee, and they would like to pick up where the ring was. But it needs material, because the lining was ruined.
Because of what?
The lining for the, the outdoor rink was ruined.
The bladder, yeah.
That's what the ask is for.
Good deal, three hundred and fifty bucks for a rink.
Well, put it in at three fifty, and let's see where we go here.
What, what can't the, I mean, I know I'm not involved in the youth center or anything, but if they started it, why couldn't they move on to that and just pick it back up again?
It had, when it sent the money to the EC, or it sent the ring to the ECBA, it sent the money that we had raised for it too.
What's that? No?
So, the Cardinal Youth Center started the outdoor rink, raised it in a, segregated its own account, raised the money for that. So, those volunteers worked for that money, put it in the account, and they gave it to the ECBA. They also signed over the funds that they had worked for. So, the ECBA has now disbanded, so now, we're looking, those funds have come back.
They have disbanded?
Yeah, they have come back, those funds. There was five hundred and forty-eight dollars in the Cardinal Youth Center disbanded, or sorry, when the Cardinal Youth Center gave it to the ECBA. The ECBA gave five hundred and forty dollars back to this community group, but they're short money to buy the new line.
Okay, so we're putting it in at three fifty to see where we go here. Okay, I'm at seven Prescott Skip Ventures. Unknown requesting tipping fee coverage. Can we give them two days of tipping fees?
Yep.
No dollars. No dollars, just two days of tipping fee. Can we give them that?
Okay, so the in-kind amount of twenty-eight ninety? Oh, included the tipping fees. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so basically, uh, we have, I think in the past, utilized the pigeon mine, or whatever we call it, um, to help with this, but that, that twenty-eight ninety in, in kind included the tipping fees last year.
Okay, so we don't need any cash?
Well, we have to pay them.
Tipping fee.
We don't pay them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, um.
They're doing a service.
Annie is doing, uh.
They're doing a service.
She's doing the pigeon, right? That we're actually running a pigeon program this year, so she's gonna use the pigeon? I mean.
She's pretty good at doing stuff with no money.
What have we ran in the past? Uh, it actually did, it, it cost very, like, hundreds of dollars.
Yes.
And, uh, and probably just a lot of staff time.
Yeah. We got lots of time.
Lots of, yeah, lots of time.
So, I'm putting a number here on it. No number?
Number.
Okay, and we're recognizing the in-kind. Putting okay beside the in-kind.
Yeah.
All right, now, I'm on Food for All Food Bank.
Thousand bucks.
No, zero.
Zero.
Well.
We give them all kinds of things. I, I know I, I.
And they give food to the hungry.
I know, I do a lot of volunteer work there, and I, I, I know that they do, but I also know that this township gives them the building, the hydro, the, and, and that's, that all adds up.
Twice, twice, two places.
That adds up.
Well, the in-kind looks like six thousand.
So, then why are we giving anything to the Spencerville Mill Foundation?
Well. Let's not start comparing apples with oranges.
No, apples to apples, they, they are in this building.
Okay, so.
So, we're giving them prime real estate in the village.
So, what's your number here?
Thousand bucks.
Five hundred.
For first round. It's pretty rough that before it even came out of my mouth, that I got a zero, I, I, I got a predetermined zero from the mayor and the deputy here, so, so I'm sticking at a thousand.
Well, the reason, I'll tell you plain and simple, what, what my, what my, uh, what my concern is here. We've got employers that are looking for people, and they don't have enough applications to fill the jobs. To fill the jobs. I think it's time that.
That we starve them out. Well, let's start, let's start, let's kill the week off, and then, and then only, only the strong will work.
There's an old saying, if you give a man a fish, he'll eat for a day. If you teach him to fish, he can feed himself. If you give him a job, he can feed himself.
But he can't take lunch.
Can I just, I don't know whether this is gonna add anything to this, this dialogue, but there's usually an annual general meeting where, with the food bank in, in, in St. Mark's in Prescott. And in the past, the different Augusta.
Oh, yes.
Scott, in our township, usually represented by the mayor, when there's not a conflict, like prior to Bart last year. Goes up, and the other, the other people.
Give the checks.
There's view with the checks, and, and, not that it's a competition.
Yes, it is.
We always, but the perception is, we always go up, and, and I know there's always been, at one time, we gave the five hundred dollars plus in-kind, but we never had it figured out like this today. And I think the others give, I think our thousand is still the low end of the totem pole. Even the plus in-kind, when we say it. So, I, I'm just throwing that out as, as perception, when you're probably.
You're, you're very persuasive. I agree with the council prepared.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thousand, I, I just, I, I think that's, it was probably one this year. I haven't heard. I'm assuming there's a.
Their annual banquet.
Annual banquet or something, our general meeting.
Okay, now we get to an interesting one. First responders, United Church, and a united outreach. And, uh, just information for the table. So, South Dundas Township, twenty-five hundred dollars uh, is what they're going to donate, and the mayor of South Dundas is coming on the fifteenth to make a, a presentation. So, the South Dundas Township is standing behind this program, uh, for first responders at the twenty-five hundred dollar level. Uh, we're being asked for two thousand. Chair needs direction here. I hate to be outdone by South Dundas.
They're a lot bigger than us.
Are they?
I don't.
What's their tax base?
Well, we were asked for two thousand.
I mean, this is not our money, it's taxpayer money. So, what's the tax base? Any idea?
In South Dundas?
Yeah.
Oh, it's bigger than us. I do, I guess.
Yes, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, that's why.
What's that?
It's to support the first responders.
Actually, it's showing support for first responders. Can I put in two thousand?
Yeah.
All right, let's put in two thousand.
We don't have it, but go ahead.
What's that?
You don't have it, but go in.
Well, who says we don't have it? Now, what have we got besides St. Lawrence River Institute of Environmental Sciences? My page is blank still.
It's the last one.
Friends of the Library.
Where are we asked for the given funding?
But their, their deal was that we'll go through, or?
Dave, do they have funding from anywhere? Like, like you said, there's a few different organizations.
Oh, yeah. They get, they get money from hydro and various sources, but still, it's, it's an expensive proposition to run that for two days.
Right, yeah.
Do they provide busing day, or does the school provide?
No, the schools have to, when they invite schools, the schools have to provide the busing. But last year, there was six hundred and fifty kids showed up, plus two buses of high school.
Really?
Yeah, it's popular.
Yeah. They run the events. They run the events a lot.
Can I put four hundred dollars beside them? I'm gonna put four hundred dollars in there, and the only other blank is Friends of the EC Library.
They don't have any, they're not asking for money, they're just in-kind?
Oh, they're asking for in-kind. Can I put okay beside the in-kind?
Yeah.
Was that listed underneath the, uh, didn't fall under? Was it?
Yeah.
Was that listed, uh, didn't fall under, there, there's always a hiccup with the, with the Friends of the Library.
Yeah, where they ask for cash, uh, it's always been a little bit sketchy, because we already provide a hundred thousand dollars to the library. Uh, but in this instance, what they're asking for is support mostly to deal with the exterior appearance of the building, which is kind of the township's responsibility anyways.
Okay, we're, so we're consistent with that. Okay, thank you.
All right, now, treasurer, where am I at?
Fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Does that?
Chair's looking for directions.
Five for Sarah. Does that include the fifteen twenty-five for Sarah?
Chair is looking for directions.
There is nothing for Sarah. Five hundred.
Five hundred. Sorry.
Well, we've been half, half some of the five hundreds, the Friends of the Windmill. And, uh. What's her total? Fifteen thousand, one thirty. Uh, Spencerville Mill Foundation, we got a thousand. They're all, they get a lot in-kind. They do a lot for the community, though, too, and they're, they're again people. As a tourist attraction. Seven thousand, try, seven fifty. Not hearing anything?
They're lying.
We just try and put, to peel it down a bit, that's all, without taking big, big, big chunks. And Art Scene.
Problem is, the problem is, is that we're, uh, we're looking for thousands of dollars, not nickels and dimes.
Yeah. Well, it would be two fifty, could it? Fifty percent the art, the art scene, which is at five hundred, they need the two fifty.
Well, Art Scene is only at five hundred.
Yeah, take it to two fifty, so fifty percent.
Okay, so I'm putting Art Scene at two fifty.
Can you do the?
Uh, so just a minute now, I'm, I'm gonna put Art Scene at two fifty, and, and now what, I'm gonna ask the treasurer to do. Uh, the treasurer has a total of fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. I'm going to ask her each time to deduct this time. Can you do that, or is it easier to just?
I can deduct.
Or is it easier to just keep?
No.
Do you have a facility to just change numbers?
Yes.
Okay, she has a facility to just change numbers, so that's.
That's the only change so far.
That's the only change.
Would have put Friends of the Windmill down, too. What about Friends of the Windmill down to two fifty, two fifty off that?
Okay, Friends of the, Friends of the Windmill, down to two fifty.
And we take two fifty off the Spencerville Mill.
Two fifty off the Spencerville Mill, that makes them seven fifty.
You can take fifty off of the Art Cruise.
Fifty off the Art Cruise makes them two hundred.
We could, two fifty, St. John's Choir.
Hate to do that one.
Yeah, I do, too. Cardinal Festival Committee, you could just give a, put five hundred in there. Probably lots of money, seven fifty?
Seven fifty, Cardinal Festival Committee, seven fifty.
You're leaving St. John's Choir at the five?
Yeah, that's what we gave last year.
Leaving it at the five for now.
What do we leave the, what do we put the youth center?
I think Spencerville Skating Club can come out, completely in-kind them thirty-one hundred bucks.
So you're saying Spencerville Skating Club take them out completely, and just give them the in-kind?
Well, it's thirty-one hundred dollars.
It's children, though, it's not adults.
Five hundred last year.
Yeah, that's the answer.
Chair's looking for a direction here.
Stoke Home. The Food Bank, five hundred is five thousand. Seven fifty.
Seven fifty for the Food Bank? No? No? I hate to get up-
Recreation Association is, is that where it's worked, two fifty instead of five hundred?
Oh, my gosh.
I know, well, I mean, we gotta cut it someplace, so.
Why, 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 why?
I'm wondering if-
There isn't an easier way of this.
And what is that?
I'm not even gonna mention it.
Stop any donation altogether, and any individual around, make their own donations.
You will need to do that before July the twenty-seventh, Mr. Mayor.
What am I at right now, treasurer?
Fourteen thousand and eighty dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
Not very far close to your budget yet.
No.
I think the two fifty's.
I'm gonna make a proposal here, I know this staff's gonna shoot me. Budget adjustment to fourteen thousand.
See, last year, we gave twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, 'cause of the Canada one fifty.
Yeah, the Canada one fifty, if you read the latest survey, it was the hugest flop we've ever had.
Did you not see the dump? It was dumping the ball.
The South Nation.
It was a lack.
What do you want to do here, folks, chair's looking for a direction?
What's that, do our tax rate?
Oh, for the tax rate, the tax rates are done. From this point on, it's budget adjustments.
It'll likely come into somewhere else in the budget, if this goes up, something else is gonna offset it somewhere. Usually does, doesn't it?
Well, the way I'm looking at it, we're on a seven, we're a seven million dollar budget, surely to goodness, there's five hundred dollars, or five thousand dollars.
Can you write, can you write that down?
This is recorded, yes.
I see that every year, don't I? Surely to goodness, we can find-
But usually, you say it on the reverse.
I know.
So two choices here, I mean, we can continue, we can continue here and, and cut these all, I mean, even if we take a hundred dollars off everybody that's left, that's, uh-
Five hundred bucks or more, something.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're looking at four grand at this point, go ahead. It's all up. I would say that the numbers that we, we brought us to, what was it, fifteen thousand and?
Fourteen thousand.
One thirty, what was it before we cut?
You were at fifteen one thirty, before we started cutting.
Five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars adjusted, so that we, we already went through once, and we reduced it, and I think that five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars is what, if we're making an adjustment, what we should need.
So that will be before the last round?
Yeah. We got, we got gun-shotted the last round.
I'll be right back.
What's that?
It's okay.
Can't believe her ears.
I'll go back and figure out what the last one was. It'll be fine, it'll be fine, we'll do it.
Okay, so I'm hearing consensus that we can manage.
Okay, well, and, and the point is that we, we have been very successful at managing our budgets every year.
Don't start talking like that.
Okay, so then, if, if we have consensus around the fifteen thousand number, then the last round of reductions would, would just be, we would go back to the numbers that we had before that round. Uh, all right.
Hopefully, what they were doing.
Oh, I do, I have them all, okay.
The treasurer has them, doesn't she?
She's fine.
Okay. Any last minute thoughts? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that we, that we basically reached consensus then.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I may, get a motion from the committee with respect to the budget adjustment, because it will have to look down.
Yes, how would you like that worded? Go ahead.
The committee recommended counsel that five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars be added to the community grant restrictions budget for two thousand.
What about we round it to five, instead of five thousand one hundred and thirty?
Oh, that was just a-
Then you're gonna have to go back and tell me which one that you want to reduce by a hundred and thirty dollars, I, Counselor Barrett probably got the right idea.
Okay, we'll do it his way then. You have to take up, you have to take up the space of ill business and community connections, take a second there.
I'll second.
Counselor, Mr. Rodley, second motion. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so that gets us there.
That's a agonizing thing we have to do.
I know.
Really? Well, you have to remember that basically, we're supporting the community. Okay, so I'm moving on to item eight on the agenda, which is counselor inquiries, notices of motion, does anyone have anything to bring forward under notices of motion or inquiries? Hearing done, about to move on. Item nine is the mayor's report, a number of things to report tonight. First of all, just a reminder that HFI Pyrotechnics has invited us, now, the invitation came to me, but it said, you bring a friend, so you're all friends. Friday, April the twentieth, from nine to eleven, but I think that they would like to know who's coming, so that they can get ideas of numbers, so I, I've definitely registered, but dear as I know, have you registered, Counselor? No, I, no, I haven't, but I mark it on my calendar, so I just-
I, I haven't, just for myself, if anybody wants to go, just let me know, and I'll put everybody in. I'm allowed two friends, too.
You're allowed friends, too?
You can bring two friends, and you can go date with that again, and I don't have friends.
So that's Friday, April the twentieth, at nine AM, at the HFI Pyrotechnics plant on the end of Hans Row. All right, next item.
Is that a PM or an AM?
Uh, the next item, Citizens of the, Citizen of the Year, it's a little program provided by the provincial government, Senior of the Year, sorry, for senior citizens over the age of sixty-five, recognizing their commitment to the community, or honor one outstanding local senior who, after the age of sixty-five, has enriched the social, cultural, or civic life of his or her community. Deadline is April the thirtieth. I'd like to see a few names brought forward at your meeting, if you wouldn't mind, and see if we can't nominate somebody. The, the CIO tells me it's not a jury type of selection, the person that we nominate will get a recognition in some form from the province, and I could give you a little bit more detail. The government of Ontario is proud to offer this partnership with the municipalities, and the certificate provided by the Ontario government is signed by Her Honor, the Honorable Elizabeth Daweswell, the Lieutenant Governor, myself as Minister of Senior Affairs, that's the Honorable Demera, Demerla, and the local head of council, so it's a certificate provided by the province that we just awarded one of our meetings. So looking for names to come forward at the public works meeting. Now, next item, the Grenville Mutual Building, so as most of you notice, if you pass by, the sold signs are up on the Grenville Mutual Building, but the deal has not yet closed. Now, I spoke to the owners today, they're very excited about finding that building, and they're very excited about coming to Spencerville, absolutely delighted. They are selling their home east of Ottawa, and they're moving both their business and their home to our neighborhood. Looking forward to meeting them. I'm not going to say too much about the nature of their business, other than to say it's a very sensitive business, and at some point, they'll be asking to meet with council members in twos, because they are not in a position to make their business public. It's a very discreet business, it'll fit extremely well into that building, satisfies all the zoning bylaws, they will probably need a little site plan amendment for an outbuilding, and the purpose for which will become available when they, when they apply for the site plan. A little update on seven thirty truck stop, as we know, it's all in, it's in receivership, spoke to the receiver today, the building, the site has been offered for sale, it's in the hands of agents, there have been several early interested inquiries. Now, the reason I'm reporting on this is because there's rumors all over the township that the, that the property has been sold, and there's about thirteen different rumors as to what it's gonna be used for, none of it true, no offer on the table, the receiver has not accepted an offer, and still waiting to see what materializes from the sale process. The next item is a bit, another bit of a reminder, tomorrow is the meet and greet for the commissioner, the new commissioner, the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission, that's tomorrow from four to eight at the Prescott Golf and Country Club, business casual dress. A little bit of an update on green energy, no word from them yet as to when they intend to address the community, but I understand that talks are progressing with Cruz and Jones Rail. A little bit about Giant Tiger, Giant Tiger has been receiving a lot of their winter goods at the distribution center, and has recently begun some limited distribution from the, from the center. Mike tells me they will ramp this up from now to August, but he's also asked me about, can they put up a portable sign at their entranceway, they are in need of more applications and more resumes. So I spoke to Andy Brown today, the county does not have any bylaw which prohibits these big outdoor signs, so Giant Tiger will be putting one up in the next few days, looking for resumes, and everything by email to the new human resources manager who's now on-site in Johnstown. And then last thing to report on is the Aqua World Water Park. Now, I think, I'm sure you've all heard of it, I've heard of it, I was very skeptical about it, but on Saturday, I was invited to a very highly confidential investors' meeting in Brockville, I can tell you that there was a lot of money in the room. The developer is extremely well organized, and I anticipate that Mayor Malanca will have an announcement for us, probably within the next two to three months, so just putting that out there so that you are the first to hear. Mayor Malanca is not saying anything, he's still very apprehensive that it may not all come to pass, and yet, on the basis of my presence at that meeting on Saturday, I'm a little bit more optimistic, I think, than Mayor Malanca is. So that's my report.
Sure, what's the, the, the location of the property that they own?
Okay, so they're at the north end of Merwin Lane, on the west side of Merwin Lane, south of the four oh one. The developer owns the two hundred and forty acres, it's a one hundred and fifteen million dollar development, and I, I can't believe how far he's gone with it, it is really something. Lot more information provided than he can talk, but very exciting. One thing I should say, four hundred and fifty jobs. Four hundred and fifty jobs.
Just for my, I'm just showing the mayor of a Google map here, this is Merwin Lane here, that's the four oh one.
Yeah.
There's River View Heights.
Yeah.
So is it, is it north of the CN?
North of the CN?
Yeah.
And, and then, and he owns everything north of the CN to the four oh one, it's like this long strip like that, two hundred and forty-eight, so. And my understanding is that they will create and develop their own service structure. Okay, so, moving on, item number ten on the agenda is question period.
Anybody?
No questions. Now, we do have a closed session tonight, one small little item, so I do need the motion to bring the closed session, I think somebody may have a motion to bring the closed session for the purposes of-
Moved by myself, and seconded by Counselor Morrell, the committee of the whole proceeds into closed session at eight fifty-six PM in order to address a matter pertaining to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for municipal or local board purposes, specifically minutes of closed session dated March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards, specifically the Prescott Wastewater Treatment Plant arbitration.
Hey, you've heard the motion to bring the closed session, those in favor, please second time, motion is carried, and we'll have a little five-minute determined.
That's me, I have it, I have it, seconded by myself, seconded by Counselor Barrett, that the closed meeting is now adjourned, and the open meeting is, okay, the whole does now resume at eight, nine, eleven PM.
Okay, those in favor of the motion to come out of the closed session, motion is carried, so now, reporting out of the closed session, the committee dealt with the minutes of the closed session of March the twelfth, Mr. Rodley, you have a motion?
Yes, the committee of the whole approves the minutes of the closed session of March the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Smith.
Those in favor of the motion, motion is carried, and then reporting further from the closed session, the committee received a report from the CIO outlining the result of the recent arbitration matter concerning the Prescott Wastewater Treatment Plant, and the result of that arbitration. That's it, and so now the chair is looking for the motion to adjourn.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mr. Rodley, the committee is now adjourned at nine thirteen PM.
Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, motion is carried.